Time. I'll wait till the room quiets down for a second. Okay, it's time to consider action on closed session items. Trail? I'm sorry, Mrs. Toffan, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move to appoint Nancy Sanchez to the position of elementary school principal.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Toffan and second by Mr. Rice. Do we have any questions?
No, there's no.
All right. Who else has a?
We need to vote.
You have to vote.
We can vote by show of hands.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I please have a show of hands?
All in favor.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
You should vote too, Jason.
You should vote too, Jason.
Okay. I was voting. All right, any other action items?
No.
All right. Now on to review items. Scalable Systems. Six A one. Dr. Dupree, I'll move it over to you.
Yes, sir. We've got, actually, this is the first of four items related to facilities master plan. The first item pertains to recommendation six and eight. I'm going to let Beth Martinez kind of lead, give the introduction.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Before I begin with recommendation six and eight, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome and introduce you to Dr. Stacy Tapera from PASA and Justin Silhavy, who are joining us in the round this evening so they can serve as resources and answer any specific questions that we might have around data and our projections in the district over the next 10 years. We also have staff from Teaching and Learning who are here this evening who can support in the process as well. And so when we were here together in May, we brought forward several recommendations. And we're coming back to you this evening to focus on four of those recommendations, beginning with recommendation six and eight. When we first came to you, we were asking to use available elementary capacity to implement innovative instructional programming that expands choice opportunities for students and improve student outcomes, specifically in the Marshall and Willow Ridge feeder patterns. When we came to you, you asked us to go back and set utilization goals for elementary schools and to further develop the recommendations to provide more detail about types of programming, as well as explain how the community would participate in identifying desirable programs. And so to date, the staff has set a goal to begin in the spring of 2019 after the 18-19 planning year to actively recruit students for innovative programs to reach an overall elementary enrollment goal of 80% utilization in the Marshall and Willow Ridge High School feeder patterns by the 2022-23 school year. Additional details have been provided regarding the creation of design teams that will be consistent, or that will consist of both students or all students, parents, community members, business leaders, and district personnel to collaboratively assess the needs and develop innovative programming in these schools. We'll engage in this process, and we've received very positive feedback about that since we've gone back to the community and shared that information. So those are the ways in which we have addressed the board's direction for goals six and eight. And you've been provided additional information in addition to the agenda item. And so with that, turn it for discussion for goal for recommendation six and eight.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. We appreciate that. Could we open it up for discussion?
Mr. Burden, can you see us?
I can see you fine.
We lost your face.
Can you not see me?
No.
Okay, let me log back in. Or I'm gonna log out and log back in, excuse me. I can still hear you, I just can't see you. So I'm going to log back in real quick. Sorry. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, so thank you for putting some time goals in here. I'm just wondering where and whether 2023 is kind of long from now. That's one of my concerns. The other one is, obviously, you haven't listed every single potential program that could be out there, but I'd like to at least make sure that microsociety is on the list because, as I alluded to earlier in the meeting, that has been proven to bring students almost immediately back to the district. That was proven in Kingsville ISD. And Mr. Byrne and I spent several days down there and.
Excuse me, Jason?
Yes.
Your video is not showing on.
I can hear you just fine and I can see.
So your video is, we lost your video?
I can see you all just fine.
Is that okay?
There's the lawyer.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morris? Can we proceed with his visual not being there?
Excuse me, since you have a quorum here, you can proceed, but I would recommend that you try to see if you can't get Mr. Burden up again.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes.
So you can continue, Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, so as I was saying, I do hope that we consider that as, Dr. Dupree, you and I spoke about after the Hightower event last week. I think that this is something that could, you know, one, it's not very expensive, and two, it aligns perfectly with our profile of graduate. And I know you had brought up something about junior achievement. It's not, I'm not familiar with that program, but I know this actually creates a whole society. So it's not just business ventures. It's actually government, you know, and business and just, again, it's a microsociety is what it is. And again, I think it's a wonderful program. Kids, kids were so enthusiastic about it, and Mr. Byrne can tell you as well, that these kids, they hated missing school. So I think if we want to bring kids back quickly, I think this is something that should rise to the top of the list.
So I appreciate that feedback. Yes, after that is, I discussed it with staff. So what we'll do for next week before the board considers action, we'll actually add that to the list to document that. In regard to the numbers that you mentioned, the goals, we've looked at the numbers and we tried to set what we believe are realistic goals because if you get too aggressive, we're, there's no way we're going to achieve them. Some of them involve hundreds of kids annually, which is, there may be something we do that could really cause that kind of accelerated growth, but we're reluctant to try to put a goal out there that we don't think is realistic. That was, that was why we tried to look out a little further.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Mr. George?
Thank you, Mr. Burden. One of the question I have is, I see a number of items listed here as full pre-K through all the way to defined items. So what is the order, especially, you know, like talking about gifted and talented academy and STEM academy and things like that? So, yeah, that all sounds good, but my question is, what is the order? How we are going to see which program fit into what kind of school where and when is, actually, we already mentioned about the timeframe, but I'd like to have a little more clarity because, you know, I see this two-way dual-language program and all that stuff. I don't even really understand. I understand what exactly that means, but sometime as we remember last couple of months, maybe we are dealing with the clarity is a big issue. So what kind of order, how we implement, either are we going to implement everything in schools or we're going to start with one and then progress it from there? Can you give me a brief, you know, overview on what plans are?
Yes, sir. I'm going to start and then I ask Stephanie Williams to join us to share additional information that I may not cover. It'll be an extensive planning process and a good part of that will be engaging with the community, the leaders in that area, in the community and in the schools, the students and the staff members to identify what are the needs in that area for programming. And then what programming do we know as educators might best meet those needs? And so this is a list of items that may be possible. It's not limited to this list, certainly, and the Teaching and Learning Department will help to lead that effort. Stephanie, do you want to share additional information?
The only thing that I would add is that as part of that design team process, we would provide a full overview of what these programs are and what they could be, look like and how they've been successful so that the community members in the design team could select programming to best equip the students in that feeder pattern.
And also, I assume that board is going to be updated on the development, what is happening, right? And another question is, I heard while communicating with parents from, not parents, actually, teachers, or people like that, from Marshall and Willow Ridge area feeder patterns, some of the teachers suggested why that campus is not an open campus. So I don't know the details of it, but that actually, if you have some innovative programs in these campuses, probably if you open it up so that other students from Fort Bend ISD have access to it, and some choose not to go, some choose they wanted to go, and also teachers feel confident about they would be able to, you know, recruit students to attend certain programs and stuff like that. So what is, I don't know the technical possibility or the legal possibility about it. So what is your thought on that?
That's very good feedback and a great question, and that is part of what the design team will be working through. And in fact, as we go into the next recommendation, which is specific to Willow Ridge and Marshall High Schools, you'll see a component of that wanting to recruit students from other, just other schools within the district as well as from outside the district, those who may be attending private school, who are actually living here, but then also focusing on the recruitment effort for students from each of the high schools. Okay.
And another question I have is about, you know, creating some skill-based, you know, courses. I know that we are so excited about opening CTE center, but what about skill-based, you know, courses, programs available in certain campuses, which is also maybe open to the students from all over Fort Bend ISD?
Mr. George, I might interject. We're right now talking only about elementary schools.
Oh, elementary.
On the next item, we'll talk about the high schools.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, are you done, Mr. George? Okay, Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Okay, my question has to do with, first of all, I'd like to say I like Mr. Rosenthal's idea about adding microsocieties to the list. I remember when he did the presentation, and it was very interesting and seemed to touch on a lot of the attributes of the profile of graduates, so I liked that suggestion. And it's meant for elementary students, is my recollection. I guess what I'm, I don't mind this recommendation here, but I'm a little bit concerned that our measurement of it doesn't necessarily align with the spirit of the recommendation. So the recommendation is for expanding choice, but the measurement goal is about numbers of students. So I'm wondering if we are trying to recruit students that exist in those own populations, students that aren't attending Fort Bend ISD schools, students that are attending other Fort Bend ISD schools? I'm trying to understand what, what is the goal? Who are we recruiting to participate in these programs?
I would say that we are recruiting students within and without. So we know that we have some students who've made choices outside of the public school system, so by offering innovative programming, we would be seeking to recruit some of those students back into Fort Bend, but we would also want to offer the opportunities to students within Fort Bend, much like what we're doing at our Lead Literacy Center.
Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Williams. So to meet the goal to get us to 80%, what type of numbers does that mean that we would, and I assume we're doing 80% across the aggregate, or is it?
Yes.
It's aggregate, 80% across the aggregate. So what type of numbers are we talking about that we would need to recruit?
I would need to do that math and bring that back to you.
Awesome. I love math. Okay, well, thank you. I would like to know that for next week. And I would also like to just recognize that when we choose to do new programs, they're going to have expenses and they're going to have costs. And since we talked about the budget for an hour earlier today, I just want to be mindful that when we think of something new, then we have to stop doing something else in order to be able to afford what we want to do. And if we're going, and I would also just add that if we're going to be, if we're going to work on attracting new students, that might be a different market than attracting students that are already attending Fort Bend ISD. And if, in all of this, the goal is to increase attendance in Fort Bend ISD, that, which would help our bottom line, I think Mr. Bassett would agree, then that's an admirable goal, and there could be some more math done to figure out when, when the cost of the program would actually be a cost benefit to us. And so that would be, later on in the process, it might be interesting to learn that so that we can be making a good decision as to what we should fund and what we should not fund. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I appreciate your comments, suggestions. Mrs. Toffan, do I see that you have your card up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Burden. So I just wanted to reiterate that because I think, I like that we're going to be engaging the community and going through that whole process, but if, while some, some goals may be to bring programs into those, into those neighborhood schools, if another goal is to increase attendance and increase the number of students that are attending schools in Fort Bend ISD, we may need to put on a little bit different lens. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there and make sure that we're keeping that in mind. But I appreciate the timeline. I think that that helps us know where we're going with this and helps us to make a better decision. And, and, and thanks for, you know, talking about the various programs that might could go in and between engaging the community. And I think keeping that in mind, hopefully we'll get some, something good. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Toffan. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, to follow up on what Mrs. James was saying, she started asking some good questions. And so the numbers really are going to be important. And two, I think you said, somebody said the word marketing, and so we have to bring something unique. So if it's something that every other district has, well, why are they going to come, come to us? Okay, so that's kind of why I like the program that I was pitching. But we have our PASA folks here, so I think in, in our last update, I think you guys were able to kind of at least estimate the number of students who live in those areas that are attending elsewhere. I don't know if you have those numbers, you know, handy. I'm not asking you to have them handy, but if at some point, I mean, if you do, great. But if, if not, then.
Yeah, so we have some whole numbers for you. We don't have it broken out by school or anything like that.
Okay, now that's fine.
But basically, attending private schools, we estimate that there are just shy of 3,700 students in K-12. And also in K-12, attending charter schools, we're more certain about this number, 3,379. We get a lot of that data from the state through transfer data and things like that, but we also call all these schools as well.
So we're losing, district-wide, we're losing about 7,000 kids.
Plus 1,380 that go to other ISDs. So maybe Lamar, Houston, Alvin.
So 8,000 or plus. Okay. So, so that's good to know. It would also be good to know, and since we're kind of targeting these areas, it'd be good to kind of know, you know, at least this general area, you know, I mean, is it, is it 50, is it 100, is, you know?
Right.
If possible.
Is it on? We have those numbers. They're a little less reliable.
Sure.
But we do have that and we can break it out for you guys.
Sure. I think that would be good to know. And I think we also should consider, since we just heard that we're losing 8,000 kids district-wide, I think we need to market some of these ideas elsewhere. I realize that the word pilot is in here, so I understand that. But let's, you know, consider what, you know, the, consider the best programs and figure out where, where we could implement them and bring more of these kids back to our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Was there anyone else that wanted to make a comment or had any questions? I just wanted to make a comment to piggyback off of what Mrs. Toffan said. Thank you very much for the timeline. I think that's very helpful. Two questions that I had were actually answered. One was community input on the programs we're going to implement. That was addressed. And then who are we trying to capture? And I think that was answered when we had, when Ms. James had asked a similar question. So thank you all for the comments and questions. Are we, do we have any extra, or do we have any other comments? Are we good? Onto the next review item, six A two. Review proposed approval of facilities master plan recommendation related to the utilization of Marshall and Willow Ridge High Schools. Dr. Dupree?
All right, I'm going to take it from there. Thank you, Jason. So recommendation 10 was to use available high school capacity at Hightower, Marshall, Willa, and Willow Ridge to implement innovative instructional programs that expand choice opportunities for students and improve student outcomes. And similar to recommendation six and eight, you all asked us to go back and do some more work. And so I'll share with you the updated recommendation shortly. You asked for us to set utilization goals, further develop the recommendations, and address that community engagement component. And so staff has been working and they've set a goal that staff will recruit 200-plus students per year to attend innovative programs, excuse me, programs, beginning in the 1920 school year, with that planning year in 1819, to increase utilization at Marshall to 80% by 2022-23. Specifically, recruitment of 15 to 20 students per high school will result in attainment of this goal. Willow Ridge High School will remain under 80% utilization through 2027-28, and this is intentional to provide needed capacity for program expansion and to accommodate the growth that we expect and anticipate in the Willow Ridge attendance boundary, as well as allow for overflow relief during this anticipated growth in surrounding areas. Additional details were provided by staff regarding the design team, same structure and planning mechanism that we mentioned in recommendation six and eight, to engage with students, parents, staff, and community members to effectively assess the needs and identify and develop programs specific to Marshall and Willow Ridge. And so that leads to the updated recommendation, which is to use available high school capacity at Marshall and Willow Ridge. We addressed Hightower in the last round of meetings where everything, every program at Hightower will remain at this point, so we're going to recommend the use of that available high school capacity at Marshall and Willow Ridge to implement innovative instructional programming that expands choice opportunities for students and improves student outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I'd like to open it up for discussion. Do we have any questions, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, so you mentioned Hightower. I know that's not specifically what this is about, but so Mr. George, in the past, has brought up that I think the Farm Tech program has been removed. Is there any thought about putting that back in?
Yes. Yes, there is.
Okay. And then, okay, that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. George?
Yeah, then now I come back to high school. So, so the question is about, you know, number of items mentioned here, and I don't see any skilled training. As we all know, every student is not going to go to college, maybe. And, and I know we have a CTE center coming up, but what if we have this kind of courses also available as an option for those who wanted to use it? So I didn't hear any mention of that. So any thought on that?
Yes, that would be a part of that planning year and working with the design teams to identify those programs. I know there's been some discussions. Stephanie, maybe you can add to this about some programming that might be, add value in those particular feeder patterns. Troy, with regard to programs that are offered at the CTE center and could be expanded, and then other areas that have been identified.
Sure. Okay. Oh, yeah.
We have seen an increase in CTE enrollment across the district, but that would be part of the design team's work to see which CTE areas we can address at those two campuses. We also have, because part of this item is the early college high school, we've been approved by TEA for a planning year. We need the plan to be approved. Once we have that in place, we'll design that starting in July of this year. Once we have the plan in place, we also have to apply for an early college high school. So that's another possibility down the road for these two campuses. But CTE, we have discussed in this boardroom, possibility of seeing how we might use one of these campuses to further our CTE development on the east side.
I would interject, Mr. George, in regard to the early college high school. We could do an early college high school that is a skills-based program. HCC does that in addition to an academic-based program. So it potentially, we have the potential to have both programs in the district.
Sure. Thank you. That's encouraging. And another question I have is, when you, when we are talking about attracting students from outside of that feeder pattern, are we planning to provide them transportation, which is an important part of, you know, many kids don't have a driver's license, so they cannot afford to drive? So what is?
Our structure at this point is an academy structure, and so I would expect that any expansion would be considered in that same light and that we would have the routing to transport students like we currently do.
Okay. And also, is there any, any timeline on putting back the Farm Tech? You said you guys are working on it, so any timeline?
I don't, I don't have a specific timeline tonight, but we'll follow up with, with staff and we'll get a response to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. George. Ms. Teliger?
Thank you. Just a quick question. It's getting late already. I'm tired. Quick question for clarification. You mentioned Hightower High School, however, this recommendation doesn't have Hightower High School in it. Is there a reason why? I mean, so will the recommendation that we need to vote on, will it have Hightower High School in it?
No, ma'am. I was referencing the recommendation that was the original recommendation brought to you all in May. And then when staff regrouped and did more extensive work around this and the determination was made to leave the academy programming as is at Hightower, then the updated recommendation will be specific to Marshall and Willow Ridge High School.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I got a little confused there. And then, so I know we've got a commitment to, because I don't have it in front of me, commitment to increase enrollment at these schools by 200 students each per year. When, when is our timeline of getting the programs defined?
The 2018-19 school year will be the planning year with the, the goal to implement in 2019 and increase the utilization at Marshall to 80% within that 2022-23 school year. And, and we know from looking at the, the data that if we're able to recruit 15 to 20 students from each of the high schools within the district, then that goal can be met. We're being very intentional about allowing for that additional capacity at Willow Ridge because we know that Willow Ridge will remain under 80%, but we know that there will be growth in the area.
So, thank you. So when you say that, you know, 2018-2019 school year, so that's a, that's a long year, right? So I just kind of want to understand when we would actually look or look for the programs to be developed, to be reviewed by the community and by this board. Is that toward the end of the school year, the mid-year, so that we can start, you know, of course, you got to start planning for bringing these students and then giving the kids opportunities to figure out this is their core selections or whatnot, right?
And that would occur in the 2019-2020 school year. The planning year would be the. And that would occur in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. The planning year would be the entirety of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. We'd begin that recruitment effort in the spring as the, as the plans come, you know, become more final and we're able to share and give an update with the board or to the board, um, after that extensive work in the community and within the school.
I think you just answered my question, actually, when you said spring.
Yes, ma'am.
So, spring of twenty-nineteen.
Yes.
We're looking, okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mrs. Toffan?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. So, actually, that was my question about Hightower. So, just, just to make sure that I understand, you guys, upon review, have said that the academy will stay in Hightower. And that's your, and the two academies, the academy programs will stay in Hightower. And therefore, they're not part of this recommendation anymore to include innovative programming, such as an early college high school. That is correct. Okay. Okay. And I just wanted to agree with Mr. George that I think that, um, we have an opportunity potentially to expand some of our CTE programs on the east side of the district, since that, we talked about this when we talked about building the CTE center, about potentially having one CTE center on one side of the district and one on the other, just for accessibility purposes. So, I like the idea of exploring what programs students in the Marshall and Willeridge, um, schools might be interested in, and then maybe we could see about offering those programs. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Toffan. Um, Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. All right. So, my question goes again to the language of the recommendation, because you're referencing Marshall and Willeridge here, but I, under, what I understanding you to say, Mrs. Martinez, is that we're only going to put innovative programming in the Marshall High School and the Willeridge High School is going to remain as is. Is that correct? And should we could maybe think about changing the language in the recommendation?
No, no, that's, that's not accurate.
Okay.
Innovative programs in both, the distinction is the goals. We've, we've set different goals for the schools, so that's what she's referencing is distinctions. But they both are targeted for innovative programming, to, and to, and to bring them up.
Okay. So, both are targeting innovative programming, but we're only planning to increase attendance at one of them?
No, we're planning to increase it both, but Willeridge is, has more anticipated growth in its zone than Marshall does. So, we've set a more aggressive goal for, for Willeridge to capitalize on the growth due to enrollment growth that's already projected and the programming growth as well. So, their, so their goals are slightly different.
Okay. I guess I'm confused, because it's, I thought the part of it was putting a measurement, a measurement goal, a measurement factor into the goal. And so, we're putting a measurement in the Willer- in the Marshall's side, but we're not so much on the Willeridge side, which I'm, I, I, I don't know. I don't, I guess if, if we're going to do a program, then we should have a goal around it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And then I would ask my same question is, are we targeting, I gathered from what you said, that we're targeting kids from outside the Marshall, in this case, and Willeridge attendance boundaries. We're trying to take kids from other high schools, is how you, you said it. But I don't know if that's really our intent, or is our intent like we're doing in the elementary theaters to try to draw kids in from, that are not currently attending Fort Bend ISD schools? Is there, I'm getting, what I'm trying to get is, what's the goal? What are we trying to do?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Heliger?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of maybe piggyback. I think what I'm hearing, um, Mrs. James say is that for the, for the high schools, because of the more, the difference between the Marshall and the Willeridge, it sounds like there's two slightly different goals, or slightly different approaches, rather. Maybe that's what it is. Approaches to how we, um, get them to the, oh, the utilization that we want, right? Is that all I'm hearing, Beth?
Yes, we're, we want to be intentional about increasing enrollment at Marshall High School with the innovative programming and implementing innovative programming at Willeridge, but being mindful that we will stay below eighty percent, because we know we have that growth on the horizon and, and some possible work around, um, implementing new boundaries as we come to the next recommendation as well.
Right. But I think what I'm hearing, which, which I would like to understand, some clarity on, are we trying to get the utilization up by, um, getting students from other schools, other high schools in the district to have programming that says, hey, you know, this is a great program that we want to get students from Austin, Travis, Ridge Point, whatnot? Or are we trying to get kids who have already left our district and get them back into the district? I think that's the question that Ms. James has.
Yes, ma'am, and that's both. We want to, yes, we want to market to the students who are within our system currently attending, and we know that'll be about fifteen to twenty per high school, while also focusing on those students who may be attending private school or charter school and recruit them back to the district through that innovative programming and, and choice opportunity.
So, I, so what I would say is the elevator speech on this is, this is about utilization. And so, the goal is to increase utilization on both, at both schools through improved programming. That's going to draw students in from other schools in the district and increase overall district enrollment by bringing students back into the district who may not currently be attending. So, it really is all of the above. And Mrs. James, I see what is driving your question between Willeridge and Marshall. And there's some wording in here that is not here that I expected to see. So, I will fix that, and I think that'll clarify that for you.
Well, and my, if I could just interject, my recollection is, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, in the packets that were sent to us, didn't we have, I think we had goals for both high schools? Okay.
That's what's missing here.
Okay. So, that's, that, I think that's the discrepancy, because we, you guys gave us bowls, goals for both high schools, but they're just not in the board book. Okay.
Thank you. Do you, do we have any other comments or questions? I just had a, a quick question here. Um, have we considered opening enrollment from outside of the district from students that live in HISD or, or anywhere outside of our district?
Yes, sir. That is something we're, we're looking at, um, starting a program for that. We, the district previously did it, but then we discontinued it about five years ago. So, we are, that is part of the conversation as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, on to the next item. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have one more question, Mr. Berdine. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. No worries.
Uh, okay. I, I guess I'd like to just bring up one other point here, and that is, I want to be sure that we think about how we protect the zoned populations. If we're talking about transferring kids in from all over the district into these, uh, high schools, how do we protect the kids for opportunities, uh, in the zones that they're in, in their home schools? So, I just want to put that on the radar as a thing that continues to come up.
We will take definitely note there. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from a board, any board members? Okay, on to the next, uh, six A three. Review proposed approval of facilities master plan recommendation related to the utilization of Ridge Point High School. Do we have any comments? Or actually, I'm sorry, admin or?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Our original recommendation for number nine was to develop, pilot, and implement innovative instructional program and flexible scheduling options to expand choice opportunities for students, improve student outcomes, and address overutilization at Ridge Point High School. And board members, you asked, you amended and approved this recommendation and asked staff to develop a proof of concept to implement flexible scheduling at Ridge Point, including projected impact on school utilization during phase-in and at full implementation, to rebalance enrollment between Ridge Point and Hightower, and to include budget, a budget for the purchase of high school site in the twenty-eighteen bond. Since the May board meeting, staff has concluded, we've, um, run through the data and, um, possible flexible scheduling opportunities, and we've concluded that flexible scheduling alone will not adequately address utilization at Ridge Point. Even flexible scheduling coupled with, uh, rezoning at the middle school level to, uh, better balance enrollment, um, through, through rezoning through that avenue, um, would, would not adequately mitigate overutilization for the long term. It cannot be guaranteed, um, through those two possibilities. We have updated the recommendation to include the identification and procurement, if necessary, of a minimum of seventy-five acres on which to construct a high school for approximately twenty-seven-hundred students to relieve Ridge Point High School, and to include funding for a high school for approximately twenty-seven-hundred students in the next bond program.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. Do we have any questions, Ms. Heliger?
Yeah, so I'm looking at this recommendation. Okay, sorry. Um, I'm looking at the recommendation and, um, I'm, I'm a bit challenged with it, um, due to the fact that we've got two underutilized schools in our district and how we justify this, this, you know, fiscally. We were fiscally responsible to put a new high school, when we've got two underutilized. And we're sitting here, we just finished having a long conversation on how we put programs and things like that to put new schoo-, you know, put kids into seats at two of our schools. And we're looking at the budget that we just went through on, on, on cost and, um, because, you know, we can, we can put a new high school, but that's just bond money, but then you still have to have the O and M and maintenance costs to fund it and maintain it on a regular basis. And we've got this issue, you know, this concern right now. So, I understand we've got an issue right now with Hightower, I mean, excuse me, Hightower, but, um, Ridge Point for the future. But I think as a trustee, my responsibility is to look at the district as a whole, because it's not just one area that pays taxes or whatnot for a particular area. My dollars, your dollars, your dollars, all go into the bucket, into the budget that Mr., um, Bassett showed us earlier to fund all the schools in our district. So, when I'm looking at that holistically, how, I mean, somebody, I need to get some feedback from all the board members, how I can really justify spending that kind of money on a regular basis when we've got two underutilized schools? Okay. No one have a comment?
Well, no. So, I'll, so I'll address that. And I actually, um, uh, we've met with a number of community members. We've met with a number of community members in the last, um, in the last few weeks, as you know. And I'll, I guess I'll just be as candid with, with you as I have been with them, is we're trying to resolve issues in Fort Bend ISD that have yet to be resolved on a national or state level. Um, we're living and working in a, a community where people choose to live where they choose to live. And we've had conversations in this boardroom, in this district, about exactly what you discussed, about drawing boundaries between our schools, or that would draw more students into various schools. I think the issue you, you said on the dais and listened to about, um, one of the communities over in the Willeridge feeder pattern a couple of years ago. We have communities that are zoned to Willeridge, where we get almost no students out of those communities, because they are not going to attend that school because of their own personal choices, and I'll leave it at that, um, without being evaluative. And so, we're placing ourself in a position, I believe, in some cases, where we risk more harm to the school we're trying to help by drawing that attention to it when communities graze such ugliness as we have seen, even in this process in the last few months. And so, there are times, I think, in the best interest of the overall community, is to take measured steps. And I think that this recommendation allows for the measured steps that allows us to continue to develop and grow each of our schools. And then to, over time, as we open more schools, draw boundaries and refine boundaries to ultimately be able to utilize all of these schools in more effective ways. But to simply draw boundaries and say, this is your new school, I think can lead to bigger issues in our community that will be very challenging to overcome.
Well, thanks for those comments. I think, well, I can be evaluative here. I mean, what I've seen over the last, and this is my first, um, facilities master's plan that I've had to be a part of, and I've never seen more racist, elitist type of comments and the letters that we've received. And I've said this before, and so I'm a little irritated right now, because what we're saying is that if you're ugly and nasty, right, it perpetu- perpetuates for us to make decisions to give people what they want because they're being ugly and nasty. And to me, that is not why we've got seven, well, I speak for myself, that we've got, I'm, I'm a trustee of this, um, community. It's because I represent all the kids in our district. And so, for us to say, okay, we, um, we're not going to do this because we, we think it's going to harm the other schools and the children in those other schools, because frankly, these adults, some maybe in this room, some are watching this video, are, are, are perpetuating ugliness and hate. We've got to be better than, I mean, we've, we've got to be fiscally responsible. This is fiscally responsible.
Please hold your applause.
We have to, I mean, that, that's our job. I mean, it's like we're talking out of both sides of our neck here, when we're saying, oh, you know, we've, you know, we're, we're, we're telling the governor to give us more money and this, that, and the other, but then this community wants us to spend money, um, when we don't need to.
Please hold your applause. Thank you.
So, I, you know, I mean, that, that's just my comments, and so, I, I'm, I'm still challenged. I still haven't heard anything yet that's, that, that, that tells me that we're not doing the right thing here. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berdine.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Heliger. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes. Um, Addie, while I, I agree with you, um, there is a reality. And I think that's, what, what you're saying is, I think, why this particular issue, this particular, um, recommendation has been so difficult, because it's a hundred and twenty million dollars to build a new high school. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm afraid to see the final numbers on this bond.
How much to maintain?
Be, well, you're right. I mean, look at Thornton, is what, was it two and a half million to staff or four and a half million? So, fiscally, you're right. But the way I see it, we have, we have physical capacity, and then we have logistical capacity. And it's easy to say, okay, well, we're just going to move kids. Your, your school is now Willeridge. I mean, you can't put a gun to people's head and say, this is where you're going, because they're just not going to go. That's the problem. They're not going to go. And, you know, you got people saying, oh, yeah, be fiscally responsible and everything, but yet, okay, well, let's do that. Let's move half this audience to Willeridge. I, I guarantee those claps stop. That's just reality. And, you know, you can call it what it is. People want to go where they want to go, and they, uh, that's just, that's just, you know, I mean, one of the problems is, is Marshall, Willeridge, like it or not, they're underperforming schools, and we need to change that. If those were highly performing schools, I don't think we'd have the issue. At least, I hope not. Yeah, you, you would. You'd have some. Okay? You just would. But, I mean, I think we tried to approach this, um, by examining Hightower and saying, okay, well, if we move all the academies there, you know, we can start moving people eastward. But then, look at the feedback we got from that, too. So, um, it's just, it's a difficult situation, I think, honestly, and on, on the fiscal side, I, I, you know, I don't like this, but I just think that there's no way out. There's just no way out with the growth down there that, that we can get out of this without, without another school. And I don't want to spend the money either. But, because seriously, I mean, when we see those final bond numbers, folks, of all the stuff, I mean, you got, what was it, seven hundred million just in priority one and priority two? Plus, a new high school, so now we're at like eight-twenty, a couple new elementaries, three new elementa-, I mean, it's a billion dollars plus. We haven't even seen safety and security yet. So, that scares me, folks. But there's no way out here. I just don't see a way out. So, I, but I, I agree with you. Um, yeah. Yeah, I share your, I share your thoughts. I just, in this case, I just don't see a way out. So, I, I would have to say I'm, I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. I don't know, I can't put it anything better than Mr. Rosenthal just did. And I had numerous conversations with, and totally, I come from a finance background. Financially, it doesn't make sense. Absolutely, I agree with you. But I had, I don't know, it is, again, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to say something politically incorrect, but I had people, I don't know, it is a racist issue because I have seen people coming from various ethnicity, live in Sienna area, saying that I don't want my children going to that school because of the performance issue. And I don't know how I'm going to fight that. And so like Mr. Rosenthal said, it is a hard decision, absolutely. And financially, it doesn't really make sense in my world, you know, when we put the numbers up. But I think that's the reality and that's my two cents on that. That's the real world we are living in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. Tosan.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So I agree with both of you. I don't think the comments are racist. I think they're elitist. I think the emails we have gotten are some of the worst I've seen in my over four years here. It's very disappointing on many levels. It's disappointing how members of the community have reacted and overreacted. And so I agree with you on that. And this has been a very difficult decision for me. My kids go to Ridge Point. And the kids are very different than the adults in this circumstance. The kids have behaved very differently than the adults have behaved. You know, you guys in this audience and watching this video have no idea what it's like to sit in this seat and have to make these decisions that affect kids. We have to balance budgets that don't balance. We have to balance enrollments that don't balance. We have to make decisions to send kids where they don't want to go or whether to build onto one school or build onto another school. And they're all extremely difficult decisions. So I agree that a hundred and twenty-seven, almost a hundred and thirty million dollars in this bond for a high school seems inappropriate. When I first talked to the Sienna group, I said, our planning horizon for bonds is typically four years, about four years, four to five years. So my clarifying questions on this are the estimates for needing a new high school are six years out. Is that correct? Yes, the new high school would be needed in 2024, '25. Okay, so we're looking at six years out. So we're putting money into a bond. We're planning six years out now. So if we go six years out, you know, you're looking at a 1.2 billion dollar bond, more than likely. So not only does that have to pass, but we are probably going to have to raise taxes because there's no way we're going to be able to sustain that. And that's, we're not going to be able to sustain that. So everybody in Fort Bend ISD has to be willing to pass a 1.2 billion dollar bond, probably, and then vote to raise taxes, pay more. And we already talked about the issues that we have with the budget and with taxes. So while I agree, I agree with both of you because I agree with Mr. Rosenthal also that it's, these are very difficult decisions. And I'm wondering what the Sienna community would say if they understand that a high school is not likely to be built in Sienna. I mean, so they're still going to be zoned out of Sienna with the new high school. So I'm, you know, we don't, we didn't have, we don't have land data yet. So when this presentation was made to the community last week, nobody asked or said, you're likely to be zoned out of Sienna anyway because your high school's not likely to be built in Sienna. So I don't, I'm saying all of that, I guess, to say that I have a problem with putting this in the bond from a fiscal perspective. If we're going to plan six years out, then, okay, let's plan six years out. But the community needs to understand that we're planning six years out and it's going to be a big bond. The last time we passed a bond, they brought us almost a billion dollars and we said no and we cut it in half. So that's part of the reason we're where we are on some of the facilities is because we said no and cut it in half. So now we're looking at over a billion dollars. And I just, you know, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this yet, frankly. But I want to make sure that the community understands that if you support this, we're planning six years out, it's a big bond and it's probably going to come with a tax increase. And all the other things that are going into it, which we've been discussing and what we're yet, have yet to discuss. But to Ms. Heliger's point, then we have to maintain it. We've got to staff it. We've got to run it. Now, maybe six years out, that'll be okay and we can do that. But we know three years out, it's not. So we just saw those tonight, those numbers tonight. We don't make it three years out. So this question is for Passa. Do you guys see growth being more rapid than the 24, '25, than six years out in that area and us needing a high school before six years out?
Can I just ask another question? It's the same thing. Because I'm just looking at the data that we have and unless anything's changed, it actually shows 2022 to '23 Ridge Point is at 139%.
Right, but we're rezoning because we already voted on that. So they're still going to be rezoning. So this high school, so we're going to rezone and then we're going to build a high school six years out. That's true because that's the recommendation. We already approved the rebalance enrollment between Ridge Point and Hightower, right?
That is correct.
And so this is just, the added recommendation is to include the high school in the bond. Okay.
Yes, to answer your question, our moderate growth scenario, which is what we use to create all these long-range projections and your budgeting forecast, it takes a conservative look at what we know today. So what we know today could change in a year, in a couple of years. So yes, it is always possible that you may want to use our high-growth scenario moving forward. In the next couple of years, I don't foresee that. But if our economy continues to do better, we're coming out of an energy crisis, Hurricane Harvey, of course, also put a dent in it. But if that recovery happens faster, yes, you will. But you'll be, it's not going to happen overnight. So I think that's good. But yes, looking four or five years out, and this is why we update our projections annually, so you get a feel for what's happening. And so, you know, hopefully it won't deviate too far from what the moderate is today, but there's always a chance.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Heliger, do you have another question?
I do. I just wanted to kind of, something that you said, Dave, around the reality, in a sense, that people don't want to take their kids to these schools because of the performance, right? And so since you brought the performance up, the question is, you know, there's an impression that we're sending the worst teachers over to Willeridge and Marshall High School. There's an impression that we are not spending the resources at these schools. In reality, in my mind, based on things that you all have provided to us, is that we're spending the resources, we are putting, you know, good teachers there. We're putting the extra classroom.
Associate principals and...
All kinds of different support systems. So what I do know about all the schools, and I sat there during graduation, I looked at the different schools, high school after high school coming through. A lot of this, the reason why some of these schools are successful because they have such a mix of kids from all kinds of socioeconomics and backgrounds and educational backgrounds. And if you put them all in a pot, it makes the, makes your school more balanced and more successful. And so if I, you know, so to me, I'm not, if I send my kid to a school that's, I have sent my school to a school that was low performing. I actually transferred him out of one school to a school that was considered, quote, "low performing." However, he succeeded well. So, I mean, he succeeded at that school. It's not going to rub off on your kid. It's not. You know, that's just how silly some of this means to me, seems to me, rather, is that because if your kid is a bright kid and if your kid has your support as a parent, why can't you take your kid over there? What's going to happen to them? Maybe, I mean, maybe I just need to get more clarity around it, but you all just got to tell me. I'm sure I'm going to get a whole bunch of emails about it to inform me about it. But, I mean, that's just kind of how I think about this. And, you know, that's just, you know, I mean, from a performance perspective, and we talked about the communication of how we share better information around some of those Marshall and Willeridge and how this, and let's celebrate some of the successes at those schools. You know, Jake's going to tell y'all something. And so one of the things around it, too, that I want to make sure that we are aware of it is that perception, this whole perception thing, yes, there's test scores, you know.
Perception is reality.
Perception, I understand, can be some of you all's reality. But I know that all of you all are bright and smart people and know that, you know, there's more to it. You have to peel back the layer in order to see what's really happening. And I implore all of you all to do that, right? We've got an opportunity here to, you know, because my thing is, you know, if I'm going to put new programs in a school, if I get my friends to go to school, you'll start seeing some of those scores go up. There's a reason why some of those scores are up. It's not because Fort Bend ISD is not doing a damn good job of trying to help and make sure that those kids are doing well. We all know that your kids are being successful because they've got parents like you all that's in this room that's so, that's engaged, right? So I just, you know, think that all of our schools can be better if we put a good mix of kids into our schools. And just because one school has certain problems, you know, people are going to say, well, the behavior here at this school. I've seen the behavior of some of the other schools. None of the high schools are without behavior issues. None of the high schools are without some type of drug issue. Each one of the schools has their own special, unique problems and challenges. And just because I have more money doesn't mean that I get to just scoot my underneath the rug. So if you want to be real, that's my reality around what's really happening. Okay, I'm going to get off my cell phones. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Heliger. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and thank you, fellow trustees, for the conversation. I appreciate hearing everybody's perspective and comments. So I'm going to go back to what's written down because, again, I'm struggling with a big stack of paper and trying to figure out what is supposed to be what. So the packet I have, yes, Mrs. Tosan, does have rebalance enrollment between Ridge Point High School and Hightower High School as what we approved on May 14th. But the recommendation on the screen, that the recommendation we approved also has the seventy-five acre land site purchase. But the recommendation on the screen only has the seventy-five acre land site purchase, has a high school now instead of flexible innovative programming, and does not have rebalancing attendance between Hightower and Ridge Point. So I'm wondering if that is part of the recommendation or not.
Well, that does not reflect, and we can do what the board would like us to do, but when you build the high school, that will require rezoning. That will also include Elkins and Hightower.
That's not what we voted on. That's not what we voted to approve last month. And so that's a problem because what we voted on last month was to rebalance enrollment between Ridge Point and Hightower. And that's what it says right here. And so that's got to be lost.
So I'd like to say, yes, I think that's correct, Mrs. Tosan. I believe we voted on that and I believe that we firmly established that Highway Six should not be a boundary for Hightower High School. So I, I'm not comfortable with this recommendation as it's written because it's not including that rebalance. That's my first thing. And I, too, have some serious concerns about the maintenance and operation of a twenty-seven-hundred-person high school. And I've forgotten what the numbers are, but I know I asked for them and I think it was something like twelve or fourteen million dollars is what we have to have just to have the doors open. So, a year, so. Anyway, that's, those are my, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this.
We can correct this to adjust, add the rebalance into the updated recommendation.
Okay, well, I think that that would be good. And then I'd like to see the numbers that are associated with it because I have one set of numbers that involves a, well, I don't know what it, I don't know what it involves. I might need accelerated learning with regard to the numbers and projected numbers at the high schools in this area.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Dr. Dupree, did I hear you correctly that we can add that language to the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rice, did you have your?
I had it up. I took it down, but I'll make this comment. When we're talking about a facility such as building a new high school and we say it's six years out, you need to keep in mind, if we pass a bond, it won't be until November of this year. And no design work is going to start on a new high school until probably June of next year because we haven't selected, we don't have the land, we don't have an architect, and it will take a full year to design a school and it'll take twenty-four months to build one. So we're, before it's ready to open, so just keep that in mind. It's not, it's not six years out like that. You've got to include the time to design, acquire the land, design and build it. And that may factor into your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal.
So I understand, first of all, thank you for your comments, Eddie. As far as the rezoning goes that we approved last time, I guess I would like to see this item completely rewritten because it kind of says review, which to me sounds like reconsideration. So I think it needs to include reconsideration of that zoning so that it's not six years out. Because, again, it looks like four years out to me is when that school goes well over, you know, a hundred and twenty percent without the rezoning. So if we're going to build that anyway, there's no sense rezoning and then building. And so this way, it doesn't have to be six years out. Just, you know, if we need the schools, then just build it when we need it. So I'd like to see us revise the language of this proposal before we take action on it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Tosan, do you have another comment or question?
Yeah, so I was going to ask Mr. Morris for his help because I think what, the board already voted to rebalance enrollment between Ridge Point and Hightower. So it's not really part of a recommendation. The board voted on it. So if we're going to, if we're going to talk about it, it needs to be up for reconsideration, that piece of it. The updated recommendation, and so does the purchase of the high school site. That was voted on as well. So the updated recommendation is really just for, is to include the new high school into the 2018 bond. So I think that's the way it needs to be rewritten. If it's, the board presidents, at your discretion, whether you want to put on the agenda reconsideration, or two board members can get together and do it. But otherwise, I think what the board voted on stands. But otherwise, I, I think what the board voted on stands. Is that correct?
So, currently, of course, what the board voted on stands, but any board member would have the opportunity to make a motion to rescind the prior action, provided that advance written notice is provided that, by that board member to the rest of the board members. Otherwise, it would require the vote of a super majority to rescind if there's not been prior notice given.
Okay. So, I just think all of that needs to be taken into consideration when building the meeting agenda for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Mrs. James, do you have another comment?
Yes, I did. So, um, uh, is, I would like to know from someone in administration, I thought that we had a high school site in the, I know it's, we've already approved another one, but I wanted to just clarify, we had a high school site in the two thousand and fourteen bond, I thought. Is that cor- correct or incorrect? Is someone helping with that?
We did have an allocation for a high school site in the two thousand and fourteen bond. Uh, it was not put in at a very high amount, but we did have an allocation in there for that.
And do we still have funding for that, or has it been used for something else?
Well, we used some of the funding for the Julie Rivers, thinking that it could be part of the, uh, the CT plan, uh, but we still have some funds set aside, uh, so some of that could be used, depending on what we decide to, to do.
Okay, well, could I, would it be possible for, to get some more detailed information about that from next time, for next week? I just don't know what we had, what we had and what we have left to spend. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, if we're trying to trim the numbers on the one point two five.
We'll send that to you.
Thank you. And then the other question I had, um, was, um, I think Ms. Heliger brought this up, and she brought up the richness of our schools when they are, um, diverse. And I can say that my children benefited from that situation, and they continue to benefit in their lives from that. So, I'm wondering, um, could we get some, uh, numbers on economic diversity for the, these, these high schools that we're talking about, uh, in this region, please?
Thank you, Mrs. James. Was there any other questions or comments? So, here's my comment, I guess, and it's a question as well, but we're, this is planning for the future, if I'm understanding this correctly, so we're not really talking about here and now. Um, at some point, even if Marshall and Willer Ridge were at full capacity, we would, we would still need seats in the future, correct?
Yes, that's correct. If, as the attendance zones are drawn now, um, if there were more students living in the, and attending Marshall and Willer Ridge, there would still be a need for, uh, capacity in the southeastern portion, in the Ridge Point attendance zone.
Uh, to my understanding, I think the spirit of this, right, is to, once again, like Mrs. Tosan said, we're planning out a little bit further than we usually plan out, and, um, that, that adds, I guess, another element to it, um, but to my understanding, once again, we will need capacity in the future, so I, I feel like that's the reason why we have this, uh, as part of a recommendation. Thank you for all your comments and questions. We are now moving on to the next item, six A four.
Jason. Quick question, Ms.
Yes, ma'am.
Tip, Tep, Tep, Dr. Tep, Dr. Tepara, quick question. You made a comment, you said we would need, um, we would still need, um, another high school, or we need capacity. What, what, what percentage would we be if, if every school was at full capacity? What would our utili- utilization be at that point, then?
If you added up the, all the capacities of all the high schools, and compared that to the projected number of high school students in the entire district?
Correct.
Um, less than a hundred percent. I, I don't have a calculator here.
So, less than a hundred percent, not necessarily over. And I'm sure you can look, you could digest and separate the numbers from the east side, from west side, from, from a utilization piece, right?
Sure, sure.
So.
But I, I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, sure.
So, I, I guess I needed to, sorry for interrupting, Jason, I just wanted to clarify, because I thought your question was, if we were to utilize the schools, um, Willer Ridge and Marshall, would we need a, um, more additional capacity? And she just said that, no, but it would be less than a hundred percent.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Um, if you could move current, currently projected Fort Bend ISD students into Marshall and Willer Ridge, there, there is enough capacity existing to, uh, accommodate all of the projected students ten years out. But that doesn't take into account any kind of logistics, or driving across the district, or, you know, that, that's pure number of seats and number of students. If you could put any student in any seat, then yes, you would have enough seats.
Okay, I, I would like to get more clarif- clarification on that, especially around the east side, where we're having the is- issue right now, where some schools are overutilized, and those that are underutilized. So, if you could kinda break the number from a east and west perspective, that would, that would help me.
I can, I can get that information for you. So, tell me which, which feeder patterns you would like to include in that.
Are you asking, if we were to take people, pull people out of Elkins, pull people out of Hightower, pull people out of Ridge Point, and shift everybody east, would you still need, with considering all that growth in Sienna, would you still need another high school? Is that kinda what you're asking?
Right, if you take the four high schools on this side, is it four?
Well, it's probably, it's probably five. It, it depends if you conclude Elkins or not. If it's Hightower, Marshall, Ridge Point, Willer Ridge.
And Elkins, I think.
And Elkins.
About that. So, if you take those five, that's five, take those five schools, how, you know, what, what the numbers look like?
We can get that information for you.
Okay.
Jason, I have, I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. George.
Um, um, my question is to Dr. Tepara, did I say it right? Um, see, in Sienna, do, do you know how many homes existing right now? In Sienna area?
Existing in Sienna?
Yeah. Approximately, I don't, I don't need any exact number, I'm trying to.
Goodness, I'm, I actually don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to sum everything up. I can tell you how many are to be developed.
Yeah, see, that's my question, that's what I'm going with it, because, see, we hear all kind of numbers from different people.
Right.
So, I believe it is little over eight thousand currently, and, um, I heard numbers like, once it is fully developed, Sienna area is going to be like sixteen thousand. Is that?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Um, you know, I mean, I can sum it all together, I just don't have that number. Um, right now, in our ten-year projections, we're forecasting about five thousand occupancies in Sienna plantation alone, north and south.
Additional.
New.
New.
New. So, that's added on to say, if it is about eight thousand, I think it's somewhere around eight thousand. I think you're about right.
Sure.
And then that's not including beyond twenty-twenty-seven. There's still another two thousand housing occupancies beyond twenty-twenty-seven. So, our ten-year projections focus on just that, ten years. So, we're looking at still another roughly seven thousand homes to be occupied, and that's just in Sienna.
Not five, not, not five twenty-one.
Right, there are another twenty-nine hundred houses, and that's, you know, anything, houses, apartments, whatever, family. Twenty-nine hundred, um, to be occupied in the five-twenty-one corridor, neighborhoods like, uh, Southern Colony, Glendale Lakes, and our new Huntington.
Correct. See, that is one of the reasons why I, I kind of agree, or I support this whole idea, because, because this growth is there. If it is eight thousand homes, you're talking about X number of students is going to come. And so at that time, like in some other communities, we look for land, or, you know, uh, then there is nothing available, we run into that problem. And like, like Mr. Rosenthal said, uh, it's, it's okay to have this land availability, it is, and appreciating, uh, item, real estate. So, if for some reason we realize we don't need a school, we don't have to build. And is that correct, uh, Dr. Dupree? We know, even though you included that in the bond, the bond is only, uh, started generating or, or become a liability once you spend it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So, and also we talk about, you know, eventually if, um, Governor Roberts wishes happened, so we are going to have a problem, uh, you know, passing a bond. So, there are so many other factors attached to it, that's one of the reasons why I thought if additional eight thousand homes are going to come, there's still, we have a need there. And that's one of the reasons why I thought it is, that's one of the reasons why I supported, I, I, I thought it is a good idea to have a planning done for next bi- ten, fifteen years. And, and so, um, that was the clarification I needed to do. Thank you, Mr. Burden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. James, do you have another comment?
Yes, I have one other, uh, question that I, I, somebody said, maybe it was Dr. Dupree, said something about that we would not be moving the Hightower academies. But I just wanna clarify that if we were rebalancing attendance between, or working on balancing attendance between Ridge Point and Hightower, we still might need to move those programs to a different location. Would that, do you think that would be accurate? Or are you, uh, what would you say about that?
Well, I would say that if we do not move the academies, based on the zone population, we could potentially relieve Ridge Point, I think, by about five hundred students, and still retain the academies. So, ultimately, it's gonna determine how much, um, how many students we wanna move, what we consider rebalance, what do we consider balancing.
Okay, but we could move the academy to a different loc-, the two academies to a different location, and that would provide some space. I've forgotten how many students we have in those.
We could, but you would recall that that would all, that triggers a whole other outcry from other segments of the community. Because that's a whole other topic about the valuing the academies and, and their symbiotic relationship with the schools where they're currently, where they're currently located.
Well, I can understand that, but we successfully moved the Global Studies Academy, and I think it's, from what I can tell from the numbers, it's, uh, it's moved and it's happened, and we moved the Business Academy, and that seemed to go okay, so, um, I'm not exactly sure what the numbers are. I have a chart, and Dr. Rodriguez is nice, trying to help me understand it. So, okay, well, I'm just mentioning that. So, it looks like there's a hundred, uh, maybe close to two hundred kids.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, uh, I appreciate all the comments. Dr. Dupree, I guess in the next week, we can get more information of those that request it. Um, I just wanna make a real quick comment. At some point, I would like for us to be proactive versus reactive in, in some of the things that we do, although we need to be financially responsible, at some point, um, we need to, we need to be able to plan for the future, and I think this is the spirit of, of this, so that's, that's all I have to say. I'm on to the next item, six A four, review proposed reconsideration of May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen board action to build a twelve classroom addition at Fort Settlement Middle School.
All right, um, so after this was recommended to the board, we've received quite a bit of feedback from the community as well, um, board members have as well, and you all have asked for this to be placed on tonight's agenda for further discussion.
Do we have any discussion for board members? Uh, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, sir. I know there's no interest about this in this room here tonight. Um, so, I think last time, when, when we talked about this, um, I'll just speak for myself, um, but I know afterwards, and after hearing from another side of the community, um, I feel like we made a mistake. And, um, again, we got new information, we got more feedback, and, um, so I'd like to go through my reasoning on why I think we made a mistake. So, if you go out and you start looking at the numbers, you've got, and these are all twenty-two, twenty-three predict, enrollment projections. You've got First Colony Middle School sitting at nine hundred and eighty-five, with a capacity of eleven ninety-eight, that does not include the three temporaries that are sitting there right now. So, it's all, it, it will be two hundred and thirteen students under capacity. If you were to add an eight classroom addition, like we already had in the last bond, that, that's another, that's more information that, that we got, 'cause I completely forgot about that. Um, so you'd add another two hundred seats, and now you've got a ex- excess capacity of four hundred and thirteen students in twenty-twenty-three. Um, meanwhile, and that gives you a capacity of thirteen hundred and ninety-eight students. At Fort Settlement Middle School, the current capacity is thirteen hundred and ninety-nine, so basically you're looking at the same capacity. But the projection in twenty-two, twenty-three are seventeen hundred and seventy-four, which makes you three hundred and seventy-five over capacity. But yet First Colony, First Colony Middle School can accept four hundred and thirteen. So, that capacity issue goes away with an eight classroom addition. Again, as I stated, we already had an eight classroom addition in the, in the twenty-fourteen bond that was approved. Um, I also think that if you start to look at feeder patterns, you have kids that currently are going to Fort Settlement Middle School, that didn't say goodbye to their friends for their high school years, because most of them, I think the majority, Beth, you just gave me that, I don't have it handy right now, but I think most of them end up going to Clements, and the rest go to Elkins. So, um, if you could bring some of those students into First Colony, it improves that feeder split. Okay, so, they're together, many of them can be together through their entire thirteen years, okay? Or at least the last seven. So, middle school and high school, which to me is the more critical, okay? Um, and then, I know we're all getting the same emails, because they're addressed to all of us, but if you notice in the emails that we got after we took action, the folks that were happy about the Fort Settlement Middle School additions are still asking for a Riverstone Middle School. So, they're admitting that what we did is not a solution, okay? So, that tells me that even if we go and we do this, it's still not a solution, and everybody admits it. So, I'm starting to think, okay, we did this, why? Um, so, again, I, I think we made a mistake. Um, the other thing that we keep hearing is, is people are projecting the FCI to sixty-six percent, I've seen in some of the emails. And I don't know how you project FCI, especially when you have a, you know, hopefully we have a bond program coming up, and a lot of these issues are gonna be addressed, so basically the FCI gets reset. So, you can't just take a linear projection of FCI. I don't think that's, that's reasonable. Um, most of, it looks like, I looked at the Priority One, Two expenses that PBK identified, and the district identified, and quite a bit of it has nothing to do with the structure of the school. Yes, it's thirty-three years old, but, uh, a lot of this stuff is just upgrades, gymnasium, uh, light exterior stuff, you know, nothing that signifies that the school is about to fall apart, because it's not. So, um, the other thing is, several years ago, we rezoned Northern Sienna to First Colony Middle School, and the feedback that I've gotten is, that's worked out really well. In fact, I think we've also gotten emails recently from parents saying that we really, really like First Colony Middle School, our kids have made lots of friends there, can we go to Elkins and stay with those friends? So, that tells me a lot, okay? All my kids went to First Colony Middle School, it's a great school. Fort Settlement is way overcrowded. Seventeen hundred, and what did I say? 1,700 and what did I say? 1,774 students. That's, that's insane. And I, and I think we've also gotten feedback that says, oh, well, there's other schools that are like that. Well, I created this for us this afternoon, so you can see this. So it's a very simple list. You all should have this at your spot. A very simple list of all our middle schools. And you'll notice at the top, 1,774 is 200 more than the next highest, which is 200 more than the next highest. So it's an extreme. I mean, First Colony is sitting way down here under capacity. And and, you know, I started thinking about my own, we called it junior high back then. And I was starting to try to figure out what kind of enrollment numbers we had when I was in junior high. And it was probably about 900 kids. And I think that was about, that was about right. And I could not imagine being in school with almost 1,800 kids. How do your teachers even know you? I, I think, again, I'll say it for a fourth time. And I'm not afraid to admit when I'm wrong. So I think, I think I was wrong in voting for this the last time around. So I would like us to reconsider this and take action next week and reverse our decision.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burden. See, few things I wanted to mention about it. First of all, I just want the community to know that I don't have any children going to First Colony, neither First Colony or Fort Settlement, or I don't have any personal interest in this particular situation. So what I will tell you this. I think these issues are separate. First of all, I like your T-shirt, Save First Colony Middle School, which we should save First Colony Middle School, in my opinion, because, yeah. And I could disagree with Mr. Rosenthal on FCI. Why First Colony Middle School is not the oldest middle school we have, but why we have a more than 50 or the worst FCI in that situation, why we have that? So I believe, for some reason, we didn't take care of that school. That's what I, that number shows. And also, Scott made his presentation. He said around $25 million it take to re-modernize or modernize First Colony Middle School. Why that amount, you know, I, I tell you, why that amount is mentioned anywhere in the bond, the upcoming bond. And and we, we talk about Sienna. We talk about, we are rebuilding two elementary school, which is financially, if you look at it, we could rezone those children. I'm talking about Meadows and I'm talking about Lakeview Elementary. But I supported and I voted for both of those recommendations because a building is just a building, and a school is made what it is because of the community. And so I respect the community, what they feel about it. And one thing, last week or whenever, last month, we were talking about, or I agreed and supported, why do you want to add a new addition to a middle school, which is around, sitting around 50% FCI, which is projected to have by 2027, reaching around 66%? So I believe if that is the case, we should talk about modernizing First Colony Middle School, and and we should find money to modernize. And so I, I don't have a list of all those details. But this is based on Scott's numbers. So another thing, and I believe the expansion cost is almost similar, same 13.4 for First Colony and 14.1 for Fort Settlement. And another, okay, we have a list of, I have a list of high schools. We have the capacity, and I understand the current enrollment may be different. We have Dallas Middle School with 1,780 is the capacity. And we have also Garcia Middle with 1617, Satia Middle School with 1641. And I don't know, it is another 300 more student is going to make all the difference in the world, based on what I heard. But again, I understand. So if that being said that, I believe we should seriously look into the problems or why First Colony Middle School is the way it is right now. We need to look into it and and more address that issue and fix that school and, you know, expand it if that's what everybody want. And I, I have no problem with that. But the, the, the situation here, again, coming back to like I said, even when it comes to Riverstone, which is a, which is a hard button area, where I like to know why we, I mean, every time I go to this board of, board members meeting for Riverstone, they are saying, they're telling people, we offered land to Fort Bend ISD, they didn't buy it. And you know what? None of us were here maybe when that happened. I don't know what is true. But I really like to know if there is any truth to it or this development, developer is just making up, you know, just a thing and telling people. I like to know if there is any communication about that issue. And and I will come back with a little more, and I will, I'm done right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. Heliger, please.
Thank you. So I would agree with Mr. Rosenthal. I do remember that night sometime around 1:00 in the morning. I specifically-
Or 10:30.
I specifically asked him the question to, to the team, why is it that the Facilities Master Plan Committee is recommending us to put the addition on to First Colony versus First Settlement? And, you know, I was told to look at utilization. So but we really can't just look at utilization alone. You have to look at utilization and capacity here. And as Mr. Rosenthal pointed out to the numbers, when you look at the data from, you know, if you put on the addition to First Colony, you're still going to be less in utilization. I'm trying to get my numbers here real quick. Okay, wrong sheet. Okay, here we go. First Colony. So if we look in five years with the utilization, with, with First Settlement with no addition, in 2021, we're at 120%, 20%. And First Colony will be at 84%, 84%. Correct? If we add addition to Fort Settlement, if you just look at utilization, you're going to be at what, 101%? Is that correct? And then if we add that same addition, those, those additions to First Colony, what would our numbers be at that time? It will be under, still be under 100%.
Yeah, if you add the additions at First Colony in 2021 is when they would be needed. Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the data. We would still be, was your question, we'd still be under 100%?
We'll be well under 100%.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
That's correct.
And so-
And at the aggregate, we are, we would be at 99% in those two middle schools.
Right, and we zone those areas, we can balance out those two schools.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think, I like, Mr. Rosenthal felt like I made a bad decision based on, I think, the information that I had at the time or what was presented to me. And when I look at the information entire, entirely, it, to me, it just makes better sense to put the eight additions to First Colony Middle School versus putting the additions to First Settlement.
Thank you, Mrs. Heliger. Mrs. Taufan? I'm sorry, I can't, couldn't see it very well. Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Mr. Silhavy, can you please corroborate? I don't know if you have this, and I, I believe you, Mr. Rosenthal, but just tell us, tell us what the enrollment projection for Fort Settlement is. Is it 1,774 by 2027? That's in nine years, and 985?
By 1,774 by 2022.
By 2022? That's in four years. And 985 for First Colony?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Perez, is it possible for you to bring us some information related to, have we done a traffic study? Or do we have an idea of the, the, the traffic patterns around both of these schools? That's one question. Second question is, if we were going to add on to these schools, have you done a preliminary site plan to show where that might be on the site? And and how easy it would be to put on the site? And the same thing relative to expanding the core? The relative, I, I guess I'd say ease, if you will. I have questions about those two things. There's certainly, traffic is an issue that we should consider.
Yes, sir. We have not done a traffic study as of now. We have looked at the core expansion, and we have looked at where the addition would go in, you know, in concept. But we have not done anything in detail at this point.
Okay. And the other, the other thing I would like to ask you is on the FCI, what is that comprised of? I mean, I understand that FCI is the, the ratio determined by the cost to repair as opposed to the cost to replace the school as it was built in 1984. But I know that when PBK did their assessment, some of that is deferred. Well, it's a life cycle assessment and educational adequacy. So Mr. Mr. Rosenthal is correct. Anyone who attempts to project an FCI percentage out over the following years, can't really do that without having the information that PBK prepared. Furthermore, if you have a roof, for example, that has reached the end of its useful life, the cost of that roof is factored into the FCI. And if you were to replace the roof, then you're going to lower the FCI index. It's going to push that down. A building such as First Colony Middle School, it really has a useful life of about 50 years, not 33. And I would just be interested in knowing what some of the other items were. Do we have structural issues with that building, First Colony Middle School?
No, sir, there's no apparent structural issues. The, the main issues are life cycle, HVAC, electrical, plumbing. Those are the main, the, the main infrastructure of the school. And the, so the, the FCI is broken out as far as life cycle. And then there's also the, the educational adequacy. So there, the number is separate. Obviously, in this case, we're looking at a little over 22 million going into this. So definitely, FCI, if, if this were to occur and these upgrades were to happen to the school, the FCI would be adjusted, and it would drop, you know, based on, you know, all the new equipment going in.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so some of the things are just old, like the roof and the floor tile and carpeting and the exterior waterproofing and things like that.
Yes, sir.
So would you say, I think Mr. Rosenthal brought this up, that the building has good bones?
As far as we can tell, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I would really like, I know it was a very late meeting when we, when we made that decision. And I think it's important for us to revisit this and take a hard look at changing our, changing our direction on this. So it, it, I don't know, I know you can't run out and have a traffic study made overnight between now and next Monday. But do you have any anecdotal information from the principals at either school? How the buses queue up and that kind of thing?
Yes, sir, we have that, and we can bring that back to you.
Okay. Is it, is it, have you given any thought to where you might place an addition on, on both campuses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Maybe could, could we see a sketch of that for next week?
Weekend.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Taufan?
Thank you, Mr. Burden. So I, I appreciate the additional information. I kind of just wanted to, you know, thinking back through this, this past week, I just wanted to sort of run down why I made the decision I made at the last meeting. Because in, in my mind, we have to spend money. That's what it sounds like. We need additional capacity. Is, is that the case? We need additional capacity. We can't rezone kids from Fort Settlement into First Colony right now and have enough seats. We will need to build an addition somewhere.
That's correct.
Okay. So my thought was, well, we need to spend money.
I don't think that's correct. That's not correct.
Yeah, y'all need to let her answer.
Audience, please hold your comments.
Because the reason it's not correct is because I'm, I'm just helping them. Because I've looked at the numbers, because Sienna-
I already know the answer. I really wanted her to give the answer.
Ah, okay.
Thank you. So for the 1718 school year, First Colony was at 106% and Fort Settlement was at 102%. That changes next year significantly. First Colony goes down to 77% and Fort Settlement is at 110%. And the reason for that change is that with the opening of Ronald Thornton Middle School, that pulls the students that are Schiff Elementary students from First Colony, because now we have the capacity at Baines. So those students leave and go to Baines in a rezone, dropping that utilization at First Colony. And you see it kind of on the uptick until about the 2020, 21 school year, slightly to 84%. And at that same school year, in the 2020, 21 school year, is when Fort Settlement hits 120%.
Okay. So my question is, if we rezone, if we do not build at all at either school, no additions, and we rezone kids from Fort Settlement Middle School, where we're going to be over capacity, to First Colony Middle School, how long before we reach over 100% at First Colony?
We're doing the math.
So in by 2022, the over 132?
In sum, the capacity at the both, the two schools together, plus the, the students in both schools would exceed capacity in 2022 by 132 students. And that's if you could perfectly put every student seat.
Okay. So we have about four years before we start going over capacity, but not necessarily out of policy, since we have 120% in policy, correct? Okay, so the reason I'm asking that question is because when I made this decision last month, the, I'm a very linear thinker, okay? If we have to add classrooms to a school, no matter what, then, and we have to spend money no matter what, and we're going to have to expand the core of either school, no matter what, and it's are currently zoned to Fort Settlement Middle School, then not to disrupt kids, it made sense to me to add on to Fort Settlement Middle School, because the cost is about the same. We're going to expand cores to both. We're going to, y'all have been asked not to, y'all have been asked not to clap, okay? So that was my rationale. So y'all are clapping, but you heard we just got different information, right? I mean, did everybody hear we just got different information? So that's my point, is that last month, when I made that decision, that's what it was based on. That if we have kids that are already zoned to a school, that's, I, I mean, I don't care- It doesn't make any difference to me. The way I make decisions is can I disrupt the fewest kids possible? That's usually where I start from. So if we have to add no matter what, and we gotta spend money no matter what, and we gotta expand a core no matter what, and the kids are at Fort Settlement, and we asked Deanna the question, can, is 1,700 kids at a school okay? I mean, can we, at a middle school, is that sustainable? Is that okay? I mean, my kids go to Baines. 1393 is not right. It's 1,600. Cause we've, I mean, my kids have been at Baines as it has increased. It has stressed the building. It has stressed the teachers, but it's a lower capacity school. What we're talking about. So I just went through all of that just to explain that that, that's kind of the information we had last month. That's what I feel like we were operating on. And if you tell me now that we're not exceeding capacity, if we rezone kids to First Colony, it doesn't even sound like we need to add classrooms anywhere in either place for four years. For, but, but that's not, but that's really not accurate because our policy says 120%. So we're, we may be at 100% by 132 kids, but our policy says we can go up to 120%. So that we, so we even have some more flexibility. We may have five years or six years or maybe seven years. So that, so I'm saying all that to say that I agree with Mr. Rice and the other, and Rosenthal, that maybe this needs another look because I think the information I was going off of last month sounds like it wasn't, it really wasn't accurate. So I agree with Mr. Rice that we need to look at traffic. And I would just like to get confirmation on how far out we can go. I guess Beth, policy maybe? If we look at the 80 to 100%, 120% that we have in policy, what are we looking at? When are, when are we thinking we're going to need to really add classrooms? And, you know, I mean, Mr. Rosenthal, thank you for putting this together. I don't know where the enrollment numbers come from, but I, I know Baines isn't right. So, was this, is this taken into consideration? Thornton, cause Thornton's not listed, so that's why I was. Okay. Yeah, there it is.
And the enrollment numbers are based on P E M snapshot day.
Yeah.
So they're not current to actual enrollment as of last day of school.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If that, that additional information would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. This is James.
Thank you, Mr. Rudeen. So, um, Mrs. Tossan, you and I think a lot alike because I had that same, um, consideration. If, um, we have to do all, if we had to do the, you know, the work anyway, then disrupting the kids the least amount would seem to be the best. So in addition to the information you asked for, I'd like to understand if there is a zoning or a zoning plan or a grouping hypothetical that would make those numbers balance out fairly evenly. And then secondly, I'm very interested in people who have been moved once or twice or three times. Um, and I don't want to necessarily disrupt, disrupt their education process any more than we have to. So I would like to see some maps and some numbers associated with them to help me to understand if we'd be rezoning people multiple times and if there is a path to success for this type of plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Uh, here, Mr. Rosenthal, do you have another comment?
Yes. So I think we were all thinking along the exact same lines. That's why we all came to the same conclusion last week. Um, so I do think we have new information and I don't think, uh, in, I had asked Oscar, Oscar some questions. As far as expanding the core at First Colony, I don't think a major expansion is necessary. Is that correct? If you just add 200 kids? Cause we already have 150 sitting there in temporary buildings. So those kids are still using those facilities, right?
That is correct. The, uh, the bond as far as a life cycle deficiency and adequacy already has an expansion in, in it.
Okay.
So if it, if it makes it, that would happen whether we add, uh, an addition or not.
So there is no additional cost. So basically, I know we came up last, last time in, in 2014, it was about $2 million to add those eight classrooms. So you're looking at 2 million versus having to expand the core and adding 12 classrooms at Fort Settlement. So it, there is a huge financial difference there. Um, the other thing, um, and, um, there was, there was something else I had. I should have written it down. I'll, I'll pass and then it'll come through.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George.
Yeah. Mr. Perez, my question to you is that talking about FCI and, um, what's your long-term plan to, the FCI at First Colony Middle School?
Well, sir, the, uh, actually the short-term plan would be if we can get a bond pass and go ahead and get the work that's already, uh, in the assessment done. That in, that in itself will really improve the FCI.
Right.
Uh, once that occurs, the long-term plan is to go ahead and maintain the building so that we're, we're not back in this situation.
Right. But are we talking to add these numbers? We talk about, you said 22 million, but Scott said, uh, 25 million. Are you planning to put that in the bond program?
Yes, sir. That number is in the bond at this point.
It is. But I haven't heard anything about, so, so it is, so this major expansion or major modernizing of Fort, of, of First Colony Middle School is going to happen?
Well, I can't say it's going to happen.
No, man.
It's, it's there.
That's the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Tossan, do you have a question?
Yes. I just had, there was two other things that I failed to mention. One is that, you know, there's been advocacy. You mentioned earlier about, um, the, the requests being for a middle school in Riverstone, a new middle school. So really needed by the numbers that we're hearing. Not a full, brand-new middle school. The other thing that I want to make sure everybody understands, because we've all gotten all the emails about the land that's potentially available in Riverstone. Our team has worked very hard and I, I really want to understand that it's, that there, there is not land for sale in Riverstone that can accommodate a middle school at this point. So I think it's really important that the, that the community understand that. Um, and the, I agree with Mrs. James. I think any rezoning that would have to be redone, have to be done if this, if something changes. I think co, that, you know, getting the cohort through, and we've done this in the past where we have said, we want to get the cohort through and it's time for that because we're not looking at anything that's going to happen next year or the year after, or the year after even. So I, I, I think that that's important to say, um, depending on what happens next week. Um, and the, so expanding the core, my comments on that were if we were adding to, so that's, I know. So that's the point I'm making is that when, when I, when I was doing the analysis, if we are going to add it, if we needed additions, and, cause I had asked that question originally, is where do, if, cause if we needed to expand the core at one and not the other, then that's more. But yeah, anyway, so that, that's, I just wanted to make those additional comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Rudeen. So I think there's three options here. And one is no addition at First Colony and just a rebalancing. The second I heard said, mentioned a couple of times was an eight-classroom addition at First Colony, which is similar to what they have now in temporaries or had in temporaries.
They still have them.
They still have them. And the third was the original, which was the 12 classrooms, which sounds like that might be way more than we need. But that would be the, I guess, the comparison that we would want to look at. And then would the administration bringing forth some language around this recommendation? Cause right now we don't really have anything. We're just having a discussion about it. So I don't know how that would work.
That's up to the board to give us direction, honestly. I mean, we can put all three in there worded the way, you know, you've proposed and then the board could choose which one they want to vote for. Or the board could direct us to bring, to prepare the item with one specific, um, language.
Okay. But that was hard to do. We don't have the information, so we can't decide that tonight, really. Right?
Yeah. Probably best, I mean, I would suggest we just articulate the three options and the board next week just determines which one they're going to advance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. And Mr. Rice, do I see your, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Would you want us to do that, Dr. Dupree? Would we be doing that now? Would we be coming up with language during this workshop that will end up on the agenda next week? Or should we email these things to you and you can kind of compile what we individually send you? Or what would be the best way to do that?
Well, I, I think if, if the board is in consensus that three options Mrs. James laid out are really the three choices. I mean, we can put those in an agenda item and the board can choose which one they want to vote for next week.
Okay.
And then by then we can also provide some of the additional information you've requested.
Okay. So, um, just a couple of the comments. Um, as far as rezoning goes, I, I think, and, and I asked, I put this in a question to maybe ask Scott to, to do exactly what you would ask. Look at a map and see who, who moved to, who moved where, when. Um, but my, my recollection is that most students who were rezoned came out of Aston Parkway or Settler's Way or Colony Bend to go to the brand-new Ann Sullivan. So I think for the most part, that's what we're looking at. So, you know, I mean, you get kind of the impression from reading emails that people have been like Chelsea Harbor, you know? Um, that's not, if you've been around long enough, then, then you'd get it. I think they were the yellow shirts, right?
I'd like to add to that.
Yes.
From Commonwealth and then just to draw your recollection to the fact that we had overflow at Commonwealth. So some may have experienced that as well.
Right. Right. But so I think if we're looking a few years out, then I think, I think that will mitigate that situation so kids will not be ping ponged. Okay. Um, the other thing as far as, is KP, you asked a question about land and, um, I will tell you that what I recall, um, was that when we decided to purchase the Ann Sullivan property, the folks at Riverstone basically told us, this is the last piece we got. And so, um, except for commercial stuff, I guess. So, you know, it's not like we've been watching land just getting bought up and we've done nothing. Um, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a land broker. I don't know. But I know that there was, it was extremely limited when we bought that piece of property. And it was pretty much, you know, take this or, you know, there's nothing else here. So, so a lot of the, I think a lot of the land is, is, you know, kind of river bottom and, um, can't really build a school there. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions or comments? I just wanted to, uh, piggyback off, uh, something that Mrs. James and Mr. Rosenthal said. I'm also convinced the movie students are ping ponging like Mr. Rosenthal said. Um, uh, I do agree with what Mr. Rosenthal earlier to, to it. I feel that we need to amend that we approved on May 14th. Um, so, uh, I look forward to, um, making the, you know, helping with the agenda this next coming week so that we can make the right decision. Thank you all for your comments. Um, if there's any audience members who would want to leave, feel free to do so. Um, on to our, no, I don't want to be here until 12:30, so.
You're not here till 12:30. We're here.
So, uh, 6B1, review the proposed approval of legal service providers and general counsel for the Board of Trustees.
It's like no one has any questions.
No questions.
On to the next item. 6B2, review the proposed revisions to local board policy, specifically BAA Local.
Ms. James has a question.
James.
I don't have a question. I just want to bring everybody's attention that, um, uh, Mr. Rosenthal and I on the Policy Committee have looked at this. We've done some major, um, major renovation of this property to more closely align with our actual practice than, um, than it was originally written. So we put in a lot of good things here, so I hope everybody will take a look at it. Um, and I think that the end result is, um, really realigning or not realigning, but, um, strengthening communication between the superintendent executive team and the, um, board. And I really like how it turned out. So.
Thank you, Mrs. James. The Board appreciates the work that you and Mr. Rosenthal do. It's a lot of hard work and, uh, we appreciate the attention to detail. On to the next item. 6E1, review proposed revisions to local board policy, specifically ED Local. James, do you have a comment?
No. This one's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, develops, talks about specialized schools, I believe. And, um, so that's, uh, just getting ready for some things like, um, you know, early literacy centers and, and the like.
All right. Thank you very much. On to 6C2, review the proposed approval of an amendment to the existing dual-credit memorandum of understanding between Fort and I S D in Houston Community College. Mr. Rice.
No questions.
No questions. Go ahead.
Okay. No questions. Okay. On to 6C3, review proposed approval of the 2018-19 instructional materials allotment and T certification. Question. On to the next, 64, um, 64A, review proposed approval of the purchase of instructional resources for ELA literacy and STEM. Any questions or comments? Mrs. James, do I see your part up?
My question was about, um, whether these materials were electronic or hard copy or certain percentage or, uh, is there, are, are we kind of shifting the way we're doing things or what are we, what are we going for?
20 of the 27 vendors who responded with instructional materials offer both print and digital resources. And we would like to shift to the use of as many digital resources as possible to support school ag integration. However, some in this RFP do support classroom libraries so that students who go in libraries are within classrooms.
Very much. On to the next item. 6D1A, review proposed revisions to local board policy, specifically EAI Local, academic achievement, grading and progress support to parents. Questions or comments? Mrs. James or, or Mr. Rosenthal, excuse me?
Well, I'm going to, um, go ahead and make the comments and then Mr. Rosenthal will pick up on it. Um, so we, um, took a couple of, uh, steps in this one because it was, um, we felt, well, there was, the first bit of the conversation was addressing academic dishonesty. Um, and so we put in here a section, um, uh, asking students to take a pledge of integrity, secondary students, um, to try to- to shift the responsibility to students again, in alignment with our goals, to be honest in their work, and to have integrity. So, we were very pleased with that. And then after our experience at graduation this last weekend, or week ago, we also added a phrase in here to, that students who, students who are academically dishonest disqualify themselves from academic and district honors. So, we wanted to be sure that we included that, and we are, our committee is planning to take up policy FNA Local, which is a policy around student expression, particularly around speakers at graduation, and we are going to take that up so that we can address the situation that developed at the graduations right away.
Thank you, Mrs. James, that's good stuff. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'd also like to add that there's a section in this policy under conferences that I would love for the board to take a look at and see what, I've actually kind of thought of a little tweak myself over the last day, so.
Okay.
But, so, a little backstory, I know, want to get it out, but real quick, so I was talking with a high school teacher who recently quit, and I asked, and one of the reasons was every time she puts a grade in her, skyward in her gradebook, within minutes she gets an email, or call, or text from a parent wanting to argue with her about their kid's grade. She goes, "Yeah, I realize you probably can't think about that," and when somebody says something like that to me, it's like, wait a second, I'm on the Policy Committee. So, I thought about it, and it's like, you know, we have this thing about students taking ownership of their learning, so why are we having their parents constantly contact teachers when they should be doing that? And this also ties into what we heard when we had our recent graduate forum, that was really one of the best things this district has ever done. And these kids sat up here, there were a dozen of them or so, and they were sitting here telling us how they don't know how to approach the professors when they're in college. And I was like, well, no wonder, because their parents are always calling up on their behalf. So, let's word something like this in policy. So, we're encouraging students to, before their parents call, to go and approach the teacher if they have an issue about, you know, grading on some test, or quiz, or project, something like that. And I would hope that our principals would support the teachers in that effort, that's still one of the things I'd like to add in there. So, maybe we can do something about it, and kind of guide, use our guiding principles here of taking ownership, and combining that all at once. Anyway, please take a look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Paul Sand, do I see your?
No, I have questions, but I'm gonna, I sent them in, so I'll get written responses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to the next item, 6E1A, consider approval of purchases exceeding $50,000 specifically for review for charter bus and transportation services. Any questions or comments? On to the next, 6EF1, review proposed of the inter-local agreement between Port Bend ISD, Stafford, NSC, Needville ISD regarding the shared use of talk line crisis hotline. Any questions or comments? 6F2, review proposed donations exceeding $10,000. Any questions or comments? 6G1, review proposed approval of a memorandum of understanding between Port Bend ISD and Houston Community College to provide GED preparation activities for Port Bend ISD employees. Any questions or comments? On to the next, 6H1, review proposed approval of the 2018-19 General Fund Debt Service Fund and Child Nutrition Fund Budget. Any questions or comments on that? On to the next, 6H2A, review proposed revisions to local board policy, specifically GK Community Relations, GK Local Community Relations. Do we have any questions or comments on that? On to the next.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Reden, if I could just comment in regard to this group of policies, I would point out to the board that we are expanding the superintendent's authority in developing MOUs and with businesses, and to improve our collaborative communities' effort. So, this applies to education Gs, and just in general with other organizations. So, I think this is a great step, and hopefully will shorten our agendas.
There we go, that'd be nice. Okay. 6H2B, GK Local Community Relations Advertising and Fundraising. Any questions or comments? 6H2C, GNC Local Relations with Educational Enities Colleges and Universities. Mrs. James just touched on this, correct? 6H3, review proposed approval of the committed fund balance resolution. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Bassett, would you mind explaining this, please?
Well, we're still working on finalizing the amount, based on the actuals through the end of, the end of May, and so we'll have those, and we'll send it out mid-week along with the finalized budget amendment. And so, that's where we're at on these two items.
So, is this, is this for, basically for unused funds?
So, the committed, so what this does is establishes what we commit for the major maintenance fund, the campus activity funds, and also the state, the one month of state, and then the economic stabilization fund.
Got it, I know we do this every year, but it's slipped since then.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Are you, are you done, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
6H4, review proposed approval of budget amendment. Any questions or comments? 6H5, review proposed approval for a blanket Edment with CenterPoint Energy, Houston Electric, for the Electoral Service to James Reese Center, James Reese Career and Technical Ed Center. Any questions or comments? 6H, review proposed approval for a contract with Eric Ryan Corporation, ER, for the completion of a telecommunications audit. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, is, I understand this is the first time we're ever doing this, correct? So, is, I mean, do we have issues with, like, what are we looking for?
No, no, sir, we haven't gone back and done audit of these bills, and we just think there's an opportunity to recover funds. This was an idea brought to me some time ago by a potential vendor, who I asked to go through the process, and he wasn't the winner, that's the way it goes, but we did have, you know, quite a few responses, and so we're just hopeful that we'll be able to recover overspending if we've done overspending in these, in these accounts. These are some complicated bills.
Okay, so we're looking basically for places where we've maybe overbilled and actually paid it when we shouldn't have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. 6H7A, review proposed approval of professional environmental consulting firm contract with GoShock Environmental Consulting, Inc., for archaeological services at the James Reese Center and Technical Center, Career and Technical Center, excuse me. Any questions or comments? 6H7B, reallocation of the budget associated with the district routine project. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
So, I noticed that there were quite a few discrepancies that seemed kind of random to me, where some were way over budget and some were way under budget, and I'm just kind of curious as to how that would happen, just more locks than we could, or less locks than we can, I mean, I just, it seemed somewhat random.
Sir, I was not here at the time when these budgets were set up, but what it appears is that there was, more than likely, there was a count that was done of the doors and the keys that might be available, and the budgets were kind of set accordingly. Obviously, some of them were pretty close, others were not as close. So, when we came to last, we went ahead and approved just an overall budget, and this is just a truing up of those, you know, accounts.
Some of them were significantly off, so that's why I was curious, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. 6H7C, sorry, 6H7D, no, 6H7C, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired here, reallocate program contingency to the Willow Ridge High School project budget for mold remediation and restoration. Any questions or comments about that?
Yes. My only question is really a comment, and Mr. Perez, we spent about $12 million putting Willow Ridge back together, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that was, that was unbudgeted funds, but we, and we did what was right for Willow Ridge High School.
That is correct.
All right, 12, 12 and a half million dollars?
Yes, sir, 12 million that we're asking to get from on 2014, and about 600,000 that we scraped up from all the other accounts within the project budget.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. On to the next item, 6H1D, use of the 2014 bond program contingency. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes. Hi. Hi.
Is there something else I can help you with?
Okay, my question is on the, this is bond program contingency fund use, and you're asking us basically to, bond program contingency for the Willow, for, to cover the Willow Ridge mold project, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay, and so, then my, so I think that that's fine, I just want to understand the numbers on this page. You're still projecting a forecast of 15.5 million excess at the end, accurate with this inclusion of this $12 million Willow Ridge use, or it's not been recalculated?
Oh, and that is accurate.
That is accurate, even with using the, even with spending the 12 million for this Willow Ridge project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
6H7E, amendment to the previously approved, 6H7E, amendment to the previously approved project budget to reallocate bond support expenditures. Any questions or comments about this item? 6H8A, review proposed approval to increase expenditure WebSmart Child Nutrition Management System. Any questions or comments? 6H8B, review proposed approval of a contract with Blackboard, Inc., for website hosting, accessibility tool, mass notification system, and optional purchase of a mobile phone app. Any questions or comments about that?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
So, I guess I'm not sure what the, why this is needed, I mean, don't we already have something where we blast out all kinds of communication? I'm not sure who I'm addressing this to, but.
Was it here?
Oh, I, you know, I mean, I know that the district sends out e-blasts, and it goes to phones, and robocalls, and emails, and texts, and all that, so is this something on top of that, or in addition, or, I mean, or in lieu of?
It's a replacement. So, we did an RFP, and so we went through the normal RFP process and evaluated them, and so with that, we decided that we would come up with a new, a new vendor for that notification. We will still use School Messenger for a period of time until we can implement the new solution, but it's an offering that's part, along with our district website, so we're gonna kind of consolidate vendors there, so our district websites will be Blackboard as well as the notification.
Okay, ah, yeah, my concern was that we were adding on another expense.
Well, but it's in lieu of, right, so it's swapping.
We're good, thank you.
Things that I want to point out is that the contract with the website was up, as well as the School Messenger, so it's opportune time for us to look at a one-integrated system.
Thank you very much. 6H8D, review proposed approval of front-line technologies. Any questions or comments? On to the next item, 6H8D, review proposed approval of district-wide MDF/DEF upgrade package one. Any questions or comments? On to the next item, 6H8E, review the proposed approval contract with Chronos Timekeeping Solution. Any questions or comments? On to the next item, 6H8F, provoke, review proposed approval for the purchase of bread, bread products, and related items. Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm gonna talk about the next one.
Mr. Rosenthal, how many hamburger buns do we need to order? Do you have any?
Do you have, do you have stretchable ones?
All right, on to the next, 6H8G, the proposed approval for the purchase of fresh produce and related items from Labatt Food Service.
No.
All right. 6H8, oh, 6H8, oh, never mind, on to, I don't, do you have any?
No, we don't have any.
All right, 6P, audience response to a dinner review item posted. I would like to make a comment about this. Like, quick, so, per board policy, we have allotted 15 minutes for speakers to speak. We could not come to an agreement on consolidation, so what we've done is we've chose the first five speakers in order, and those are the ones that are going to speak this evening. Minutes, Mr. Rosenthal is going to time. If we have any, please hold any comments, clapping, any of that to the end. Mr. Rosenthal, you have the time?
Yes, I'm ready.
My video skipped a little bit here, so I apologize.
Yeah, I don't have a list of speakers in front of me.
Justin, you have them, they were emailed to you, I believe.
All right, I'll look at that mail.
Okay.
All right, here we go. First, we have Senator Rudolph. Senator Rudolph isn't available, is in, or in the room.
She's, she's running.
Then you have three minutes, whenever you're ready.
Officer. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much for allowing me this time. I do feel a little silly speaking after hearing the discussion, but I wanted to get up anyway. I had a lot prepared for you, I printed out several packets, each board member has a packet in what I gave. It's not on? I'm not close enough? Okay. Um, so what I want to do is I want to not take my three minutes and my packet includes my speech. You can peruse it in all the free time that you have for the rest of the evening. Um, so, but I do want to talk about one thing that was in my speech and you guys are really concerned about the rezoning of the children. I get that. But something the district has done many times before, which is to grandfather and students. So that could potentially be done this time too. When you have a student that starts in sixth grade and ends in eighth grade at the same school, they're not rezoned, you know? They go to the same school for all three years. So I wanted to leave that piece of information not thought with you guys and, um, and ask the board to rescind the vote that they made on May 14th. And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rudolph. Up next, Lavi Kumari.
Good evening and thank you very much for this opportunity. Most of which I wanted to speak and point out, you already have expressed and conveyed information. I would just like to point out a few things. The overcrowding was, uh, really a big issue to think about because of the children. Like in this document that was presented, we had, uh, the enrollment projected, combined enrollment projected for both the schools at 120%, whereas it didn't take account, take account, uh, individual stress that would have put on individual school. So it was covered. Thank you for that. And regarding the issue of if we were to go ahead with the overcrowding on Fort Settlement, it would create a big stress, not only on children, but the staff, teachers and everybody else in the school. And we were able to not go through it and that's a good thing. Thank you very much.
So you still have a, a minute and a half, sir? If you'd like to call somebody else in your place?
Uh, Mr. Rosenthal, hold on.
Oh.
Hold on, hold on.
Well, uh.
We're going to, we're going to work through our first five.
Okay. Got it.
Yep. I'm left over.
We have an extra minute and a half at the end so far.
Okay, we've, 11:45 is 15 minutes, so we will, we will continue to go through these.
Okay.
Here. Next is Achu Ban Sol. Sorry about that. You have three minutes, sir.
I, I accept your apology, sir, because as you also means Mr. Bless You, so you can call me that.
All right.
At least I made you all smile.
All right.
I understand what a difficult task it is for you all to listen to me right now. 11:30, my God, it's, it's some time. But I'm here to connect the powerless, that is our kids, to the powerful, that is you. I'm hopeful you will listen to your heart as you, the day you made this decision and as you sign off their fate. Projections have been incorrect in the past. They will be incorrect in the future. You can't control that. And why I say so? Because my kids were ping ponged enough in 2014. They were disrupted in 2017 through Harvey. And I ask people who are saying safe F S M S, did they go through that? And that is happening again, my friends, and it's through you in 2019. I can see that. And thank you for pointing out how kids and their stability has been important to, to you throughout and thus the status quo. Rightly so, under President Tassin, their appeal was supported, not because of numbers, but because of them, the kids. And that was your unanimous decision. You couldn't lie on that. You listened to your heart. That night on May 14, 2018, I appeal, do that again. My hope is you will protect them as they work through you because they are powerless and you are powerful. Based on the fundamentals of minimal disruption to the kids, as Ms. Tassin rightly iterated, the powerless might become powerful. As pointed out by one of the B O Ts, the difference between fiscal numbers and reality is important. I urge you to understand the reality here by stepping yourself in the shoes of these powerless kids. You consider the number of 2 million today, that is 0.2% of your budget, to add four classrooms versus the number of kids that are disrupted by the decision that in fact is the powerless reality. We agree when you say kids disruption should matter and thus be none. If it comes to spending, spend there is no destruction for us. Since projections have not been correct before, they have been interpreted incorrectly just two weeks ago, we urge the board to wait till it, till the actual enrollment nears the capacity.
Sorry, your time is up.
As disruption is what, the, what is the key here. Thank you, and I appreciate you listening out to me. I know it's difficult.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next one. Thank you. Uh, Yee Ma Phan. Thank you very much for being here. You have three minutes, Rosenthal.
Um, thank you, respected Dr. Dupree and, um, Board of Trustees and administrators, administration. I hope you all can hear me, um, and all communities here today. Um, thank you for letting me address some of the concerns that we all have. Uh, please think of us as allies, um, and, um, I see here a lot of red shirts today. And question is about Fort Settlement, um, saving Fort Settlement. My question is about from where, from how, from who you want to save it from? Children, our kids, your kids? Um, it is very disappointing and sad part is that decision is, um, can be reopened by just handful of concerned parents. One of the main petitioner doesn't even have any of the child going to Fort Settlement currently. Neither their data aligns or, uh, with the Scott that data presented clearly shows that they were not involved in the process, but were provoked or, um, instigated by false claims and rumors. Revisiting your vote decision is communities and vest of administration time on some of which we can be used, um, for a greater purpose. It will be taking faith away from a Board of Trustees and their process of voting. Here I stand with united voice of entire Riverstone with 600 and, uh, 6,900 registered voters as of, uh, registered. Uh, want to keep, we just want a current feeder pattern as, as is. We don't want a rezone. That's all we are asking. We still request to modernize our aging school, First Colony, and there's no question about it. We can, we came to know that new development is coming, um, to Scenic Road where agents are already advertising about Fort Settlement as a middle school and Clemence as a high school. We don't know yet, you guys have no, not known yet because it's not in Pasa. And that is going to be again dramatic as everybody's concerned about why didn't we have a land for a middle school because it just aroused and Riverstone just came up out of nowhere. Um, this will be again chaotic. So just in similar way, for Ben I S T, I, I just want to request and quote Mr., um, H Duque, which is a principal of Fort, uh, Fort Settlement Middle School, said himself that he can manage security of, at large with the entire school. Um, at least all of, um, you know, students will be, our students are the only one who are going to be suffering, um, every few years with the rezoning if those additions are not going to be.
Thirty seconds.
Um, last, I would like to special thank Ms. Tassin for being great president in past years and I just hope and pray that Mr. Burden, um, can follow the same passion as you had for the good of the students and only students. Um, no rezone stability, transparency, and please retain the decision of May 14th. This is all we need. No rezone. Thank you.
Please hold your. Up next, Y'all. Chu, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say that.
Chu. Please correct me if I can get that right.
How do you say your last name?
Uh, Chu.
Thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
All right. So I come here just to ask a question. What is the priority here? Is our children or the budget or the utilization number of certain schools? I remember Dr. Dupree asked everyone to keep this question in mind when we ask for parking lot ideas. I hope everyone still keep this question in mind when you make decisions. I hope you share the same answer as me, our children. The priority should be our children. It should always be our children, their education, their mental, physical health and their happiness when they go through the four band I S T schools. I'm a neuroscientist. What I do is to investigate how brain responds to changes in the environment and how these changes may affect our physical and the mental health. I know it's a fact that the instability of the environment is among the most detrimental factors that will hurt our health, causing diseases like anxiety, depression, suicidal, even cancers. On top of that, our children is the most vulnerable to the instability. They need stability. The point I want to make here is that our children need stability more than anything else. And the last thing we want to give to them is the constant rezoning, especially true for children who live in Riverstone area. Riverstone started to be developed about 10 years ago and there, there is about more than 6,000 households. Yet, Riverstone children just got their elementary school about two years ago. They still don't have their own middle school. These children has been constantly bounced around whenever rezoning becomes a easy and cheap solution. Remember, these children last year, many of them gone through Harvey. Their houses were flooded. They had to stay in hotels or other people's houses for months. These children need stability. Again, I'm asking you to, it's a priority when you make decisions tonight that will influence their life, life. I believe you have our children as the priority when you voted to rebuild Meadows Elementary so that children there do not have to be rezoned. I believe you have put your, put our children as your priority when you voted to add to Commonwealth, Austin Parkway and Settlements Way and Set, Settlers Elementary so that children there do not have to be rezoned. They can study in a safe and comfortable, comfortable study rooms. I do believe you have put our children as your priority when you voted to add.
Thirty seconds.
Put permanent structures on Fort Settlement Middle, Middle School. Necessary rezoning. As a parent, as a citizen, I appreciate all this decision you have made and I will support the common bond to implement these plans with our children with the priority. Now, when you are reviewing any reconsideration proposals, I just ask you to remind you, please put our children as the priority as you did not. Please do not rezone Riverstone children. That's it.
Please hold your. Thank you. We have time for one more speaker if they're there, Mr. Rosenthal. You have.
Mr. Rosenthal is looking at the list right now.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Great.
Mr. David.
I'll start, excuse me, I'll start with Dr. Dupree's 2016 statement about appropriate learning environments to wit. Our goal is to really balance enrollment in schools so that we can have an outstanding learning environment for all children. Overcrowded schools are not the best learning environment. If providing the best environment is the desired outcome, first the decision to expand Fort Settlement and balance the student populations between Fort Settlement and First Colony. The plan, including funding dating back to 2014, was to invest in First Colony and possibly expand it modestly to handle the population, population increase in Riverstone. For approximately 300 students from Siena moving to their new middle school, these seats will become available. The 1 A M, May 15th amendment in, in a nearly empty room to replace the steering committee recommendation with a significant and insufficient expansion of Fort Settlement both surprised and alarmed the Fort Settlement community. It's fiscally irresponsible to leave unused capacity at First Colony while spending millions of taxpayers' dollars to expand Fort Settlement into a wildly oversized middle school. Beyond the responsibility of the 12-room addition to Fort Settlement, an oversized, crowded school does not provide an appropriate learning environment for the students as stated by Dr. Dupree in 2016. And finally, I don't believe this is the case for the majority of the board, but I believe that not all remember that they are charged with representing the educational and fiscal interests of all the residents of the district, not just their immediate neighbors in their development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
Please. Motion to adj, miss, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm sorry, you were cutting out there. James, motion to adjourn second by Mr. Rice. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
I'm signed up. Nobody can. I've been out there. I always. And I was. I was. I was. I was. I was.